Call to order, this is March twentieth twenty twenty five, meeting of Manchester Shortsville Central School District Board of Education. Welcome please stand for the pledge leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with the great justice of God. So you're a little short staffed, but uh, you'll be getting some folks under the leather, so hopefully feeling better. And we'll go ahead and get things started. First part, order of business is, uh, meeting minutes from the, uh, February thirteenth meeting. We'll do that quick and then, actually Tim, if I could just ask, did you notice, do we know if there's public comments?
Uh, it's after this, but I can make a note.
Yeah, very good. Nothing's open? Do you want public, do you wanna speak?
Yep.
Welcome. Very good. Uh, okay, so, uh, minutes, Board of Education, pardon my recognition of the Superintendent of Schools, the President of Education Law approves the February thirteenth twenty twenty five, uh, regular Board of Education meeting minutes as per centive. Motion to Chelsea, second gen, any questions on the minutes, all in favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you. Didn't see anyone sign up in the last thirty seconds, so if you're all sat in the comment, which takes us to, uh, what?
Jamie, is barban, does clarity, is barban zooming in?
No, she's not.
No, she text, she texted like her first one going on.
Yep. Just the four of us hold down the form here. Well, we do, just barely, uh, very good, uh, that's okay, uh, alright, so, yeah, um, often our most exciting part of the night, I guess I'll gonna kick it over to our students for key for me. What's that? That, we, we, we don't have any. Alright, sorry.
Good evening. Good evening, um, I'm gonna start off with my positive highlight, which is the winter sectional results, um, from last February and also this month. Um, so we're gonna start off with the boys varsity basketball, they won their first sectional game against Camp Al Savanna with, uh, score of sixty eight to thirty five. And then they continued on to the semifinals, February twenty eighth against Belver Richburg, um, it was a tough game. And Red Jackets' season did end with a score of sixty two to forty five, um, but they did have a really good, uh, winning streak. Um, then I'm gonna turn it over to girls basketball, and they ended their season against Bloomfield, um, but they also did have great determination within their season, and they always tried as hard as they could. Um, but it didn't, did end last February. Uh, then I'm gonna move to track and field, um. They competed in class B four sectionals at Nazareth University, um, they had a great end to their season. And, um, a senior Truman Hill, in his first indoor track season, was the winner in shot put with a throw of forty three feet. And, um, two point seven five inches. And then Josh Lapel, who is a junior, um, set a personal best while taking second in the section for the fifty five curls. Along with that, Aurora Park, um, she ran a new best time in the second mile, placing second in the field. Um, she came back later in the meet to finish fourth in the mile. Um, and along with Aurora and Truman, um, they went on to state qualifiers. Wrestling, um, competed in B four sectionals, and they had two second places, Barrett Weatherby in the, um, one sixteen, and Tristan Bellis, also second place in the one twenty four. Um, then varsity cheerleaders, uh, we had our sectionals, and we had seventeen teams in our division, we did finish ninth overall. And hu- our hockey, played by Parker, um, they ended their season at sectionals, losing to Brighton. And, um, I would also like to highlight our exceptional seniors that were chosen and went to their except, um, exceptional senior game this past Sunday. Those were Tim Brown, um, a senior, who played in the boys basketball, and, um, myself and Jasmine Clement, who did the exceptional seniors, um, cheerleading league. Um, we didn't have any girls from our varsity team go there this past Sunday, which was a little bit a letdown, but it's okay. Um, but the boys did have a really, really good game, it was an amazing experience, and I just wanted to mention that because it was a really, really cool thing to do. Um, and then, just like to highlight that the spring sports season kicks off March seventeenth, which already passed. Um, and practices are beginning for softball, baseball, outdoor track, and field. And also golf, if you wanna know that.
If you do. Awesome, thanks.
Um, hello, all of you, uh, I hope you're doing well tonight, uh, my highlight was, is in regards to the traffic situation that we had talked about last meeting. Um, as mentioned, the administration, uh, had planned to send out an email that was outlining all of the revised traffic patterns that we, uh, wanted the parents, students, and faculty to follow. This email was sent out on March twelfth, and it included the designated pickup and drop off times for the elementary, middle, and high schools. Um, and specific time restrictions for both the elementary and the R J E C bus loops where parents could not enter, um, before two fifty five. That way it would give more time for the buses and give them a better, um, uh, quicker, uh, dismissal time for all of the students. On top of that, there was a visual, visual representation of the traffic flow on an overhead map that was detailed out the best way possible, that showed, um, parents should be coming down Lehigh and coming through this, uh. Uh, I don't know, entry, thank you. In addition to that, there are, there will be multiple visitor parking spaces at each one of the new district main or the main office entrances. And it also came with, uh, safety reminders regarding fire lanes, crosswalks, and overall traffic awareness. Uh, the implementation of these adjustments are currently underway, with administrators present to oversee and facilitate the process. And that will, you will see that happening for the rest of the year until more, uh, changes are looked at over the summer.
Okay. I, I don't know if you have how much firsthand knowledge you have, but do you, has, have there been any, like, um, do we see a difference with some of the changes that are made yet, or is it?
Most definitely, yes. Um, I actually have class eighth period right against this wall, and, uh, it went from seeing parents lining up from one thirty P M. all the way up until, all the way up to Lehigh, and now it is right about two fifteen when they come and get ready to pick up their kids, which is an amazing change, really.
Okay. I wonder if part of that was just a knowledge gap, like people just need really know what their expectation was. Well, thanks, yep, that's great, on both accounts, so, and keep on going.
Okay, um, today we're going to be discussing the suggestion box that you guys might remember from a few meetings ago, um, that we incorporated into the social studies classrooms. All of our results from the middle school with forty six suggestions is what we saw. Um, we noticed a trend in the suggestions, um, for examples with the school's start and end time, um, the locker space, lunchroom proportions, and extended time on lunch. Um, suggestions for the suggestion box, um, bathroom locks and or broken sinks, toilets, et cetera, and also, um, an athletics ski club.
Um, on the note of the ski club, a few years ago, we did have a ski club that was, um, relatively, uh, not well known within the school, um, and because of that, it fell to the wayside after the first year. Uh, while we were looking at the middle, middle school replies, there were multiple people who had brought up the idea of bringing this club back. Uh, one of the biggest reasons why the club didn't work in the past was because of, of their lack of participation. Um, I firsthand remember when that club had started to come into, uh, talking, and there wasn't really any, uh, you know, publicity for it, there was a few posters and maybe one announcement. But, um, we were able to facilitate the club through Canadega, but without the necess- the necessary members, we weren't able to provide transportation, and we couldn't end up, uh, continuing it. Currently, there are also a lot of high schoolers who wish to have part in this program, I myself know a few, so, um, we are going to be looking into this, and hopefully that will be a new, uh, club that we can start next year.
Exciting.
Um, on the note of the lunchroom proportions and time, we, both Randy and I had a meeting with, um, Ms. Fe- uh, Febré about said topic. Um, we discussed on how she had an idea, and also had an opinion on how she wants more time for the kids, especially when they're eating outside. Because she let us know that they only get eleven minutes outside, and she would like them to have more, which is fair, because it's beautiful outside, not right now, but it usually is. Um, and she brought up the topic of a win period, um, which is just another section of time that you could add on. And instead of using it for a homeroom, you would put it after lunch to give kids an extended period, period of time to eat lunch. Because I myself, I feel like I don't have a lot of time to eat lunch either, and it's really stressful, so I get where the kids are coming from. Um, but we did discuss this, uh, win period, and we, both Randy and I, found out that it will be discussed over the summer with administration to work out the kinks with the schedule.
Was that, if I, if I don't mean to interrupt you, but I have a question, was that specific to the middle school, or was that across, I, I know you're stretching.
I'm not totally sure, I know she brought up Ms. Febré.
Or, sorry, the, the suggestion, that is what I was wondering about, was the suggestion one, was a theme in the middle schools specifically?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah.
We have no suggestions.
Yeah, we had no suggestions. We'll get to it.
Yeah. That's a big topic.
So it's been all forty eight were from the middle.
All forty six?
All forty six were from the middle.
Yeah, go, go middle school.
Yes, yeah.
The mic girl.
Another point we talked about at the meeting was, uh, providing a table for food that students could place their unwanted, um, fruits or vegetables or milk. Because that is often something that they, that many kids throw away when they don't want it, because you are, um, required to take both a milk and a fruit, even though, if you don't want it, because of state, uh, restrictions on the lunchroom. So, uh, we came up with the idea of placing a table there, so students that have not felt like they have gotten enough food can go up and grab the food others did not want. That way it can help balance out the people who feel like they need proportions on their lunch size. Um, and, yeah, that's the hope of that.
Um, also in that meeting, we brought up the, uh, bathroom and the locks and the things in the bathroom that are broken. Um, and she discussed on how she wanted to come in on her own time to, to look in the bathrooms and see what the problem is and what we can do to fix it. Um, which I thought was amazing that she's going in on her own time. Um, and then we also talked about, um, you know, putting in another order for, uh, the locks and the toilets and the sinks to be looked at, um, just to make sure that they're all up to standard. And then Randy and I, um, this morning, talked to Mr. McCarthy about the bathrooms, and we were both informed that he was having his custodians go into the bathroom and, you know, check out the problems and figure out what's going on, just so the kids can utilize all the bathrooms. Because some of the bathrooms, even in the high school, the locks don't lock, and it's.
Like, of stalls?
Yes, like they will not lock at all. So I think it's really cool that the middle schoolers are noticing that and want that to be fixed.
That stinks.
And here's the point on the zero high school responses. Um, after we had looked at the first round of suggestions, we realized that they were all middle schoolers, um, and although it wasn't what we had hoped for, it wasn't, it's not completely disturbing. We hadn't put out a lot of information on it as of yet, and we were hoping that, you know, some students would have some ideas that they were willing to put through before we really got into the minute rate of how to, um, really promote it. Um, but we have talked about some measures we can take to increase the participation, and, um, we came up with a few of those that we wanna share with you. Uh, one idea was giving a weekly prompt to the students, uh, that would be one that we would talk about with, um, Michael and I, Mr. or Superintendent Bernard and Mr. George. And we would, uh, lay out four for each week in our monthly meeting, and we would broadcast that over the announcements, and hopefully give them a push to where they would want to give feedback, and maybe it would give some of their own that's not regarded to the prompt. Other than that, we were, uh, planning on making specific slips of paper that would be, uh, set next to the boxes that would make it easy to facilitate them to use. And also, uh, it's really just our goal to make it, give them less pressure when trying to put these ideas in, so it doesn't seem like they're, you know, making our entire speech up for us, so, that's really.
I'm s- I, I'm sure I follow exactly, I'm probably me, I'm just curious, what have you done then?
I. Uh, just so they don't think that they have to come up with some idea that, that's super groundbreaking.
Oh, okay, yeah, like, just small, do you know what's going on, just so they can just adjust, right?
Yeah, I mean, just a small little. Yeah.
We're also, um, to add on is, we are going into these, we took this on upon ourselves, we're going into, um, the social studies classrooms when we have free time with each other at the same time to talk to all of the social studies classrooms, Sir Gossi, Rappel, and Harrington, and talk to the students for like, less than five minutes. Just like, give them a prompt and try and encourage, like, this is here so that your voice can be heard, and we wanna see what you have and what you want.
Yeah, we really wanna put ourselves out there because, um, not everybody knows about the student programs and what we found today.
A lot of people.
Um, I mean, everybody in our class, we talk about it every so often, so I kinda just thought, you know, that people have heard about it, but it's never really crossed my mind that the, the students have never really heard about what we do.
And a lot of people don't know about the suggestion box either.
Is it multiple boxes?
Yes, one per social studies classroom.
Yes. And there's one of those.
Yeah.
Do you dare put one in like cafeteria or something, are you worried about?
That's all right, I'm pretty sure you should be.
Well, the reason that we put them each in the social studies classrooms is because, um, everybody has to take social studies credits, so at some point in time, they are in the area with the suggestion box. The one reason we didn't put it in the cafeteria was because everyone's so preoccupied with eating already that, um, it's something else that we were thinking would fall to the wayside.
Alright.
Questions, or? I wanna say, I thought, you guys, I, I, I always, I expected this would be really valuable to have you guys, you know, doing what we're doing here, and, um, I'd say this is like, really blowing away my expectations, I learned so much in these, and, uh, I'll say thanks. And as always, um, yeah, so great job, and I'm glad to have you stay, but I know you guys are busy, so, the usual, like, whenever you need to go, if and when, just do what you gotta do. Okay, um, that's great. That brings us to, we've got Dr. Weller, okay?
So really quick, just while Brian's getting ready, I just wanted to remind everybody kind of what we've been trying to, uh, initiate the last two years is, um, we've been trying to find ways to continuous, have continuous conversations for the hard disk of data. Not just a one time, once a year thing, so for example, what we've tried to build over the last two years is Dr. Weller and I meeting with the board at the end of the summer, in the early fall, in a named workshop session, and really diving in and looking at our district data from an academic standpoint. And then each principal presents in the following months, October, November, December, and they build out what their individual buildings are working on. Mrs. Hall shares usually in January on what her department is building on, and then Mrs. Brown will do that later with athletics. And then tonight, we're trying something new, and obviously looking for feedback from the board in regards to trying to bring all of that together in one, um, manageable presentation that captures what the principals have shared, what Dr. Weller started the year with, and give some updates to the board now in March. So we're, we're gonna try to do this each year, so we'll look for feedback from the board for not only the content, but timing of when to do this annually as well. Go ahead, Dr. Weller.
Okay. Hi. This is, this is kind of a tag team presentation, um, I'm, I'm gonna start with, uh, kind of a global, uh, look at some demographics in the district. Um, and then each of the principals have, uh, some key pieces that they wanna share with you as well. They're not the same pieces in each building, um, but keep in mind that just because one building is showing one piece of it, it, there, there are similar things going on in each building. We didn't wanna give you three buildings, all of the, the same kind of data, so thi- this is a, a variety of, um, of pieces that they've selected for this, okay? Um, so, we're gonna start with the district lens, I'm gonna walk you through some of the demographic trends with our student population, and take a look at some, some data about our staff. And then at the elementary school, um, Jeff's gonna go back and talk about some of the student achievement from his, uh, building council goal from earlier in the year when he presented. Uh, Terry's gonna talk about some assessment data with Star, which is part of her building council goal as well, and one of the tools that we use with attendance monitoring. And then at the high school, uh, Brian's gonna talk about his building council goal of extracurricular participation, and also update you on the graduation rate, and, uh, where we've been and where we continue to head. So by the numbers. Give you a lot to look at here. I wanna walk you through it though. On the left hand side of this chart, you can see at the very bottom, I started with the year twenty fifteen sixteen. And taking it all the way up through twenty four, twenty five, and this is data, um, that actually, you, you can go into, uh, the beds data that we report every October. And so the, the numbers here may not necessarily match what sometimes we've reported on in January, or in March, or in June. This is data that comes from New York State, we do reporting on beds days so that everybody has a similar measuring stick across the state. Obviously, we have students who come into the district at different parts of the year, we have students who leave at other points. So, uh, there, there is a little bit of variability in numbers depending on when you look at it, but this is that pull from the, the first Wednesday in October of each of these years. Across the top, you can see I've got, uh, the PK twelve total is that next column over, the total number of students in U P K all the way through twelfth grade, the entirety of our student population for each of those years. Then the red bar across the top, PK H, PK F, grade K through grade five, that's all our elementary enrollments. If you look next in white, grade six, seven, eight, that's our middle school population, and then again in red, grades nine through twelve is our high school population. A couple of things here, PK H and PK F, pre-kindergarten half day, pre-kindergarten full day, you can see we made a transition there a few years ago, alright? So I've pulled the numbers of, of students that we had both of those years. The thing to keep in mind as you look at this chart, as confusing as it is initially, if you start at the very bottom of the chart, and I, I would say if you start with kindergarten in twenty fifteen sixteen, you'll see we had forty eight students in kindergarten that year. If you follow that yellow chain of numbers up in a diagonal, that is the cohort of students that entered kindergarten that year. This year, they are in ninth grade. We started with that cohort group, forty eight students, you can see there's a little bit of variability throughout each of those years, now there are fifty three students in that class, okay? So you can pick any one of these years and follow that trend as we're going from, uh, fifteen sixteen up to today, alright? So I've given you, uh, again, in that, that second column, PK twelve total, in twenty fifteen sixteen, we had eight hundred and twenty four students enrolled here. Currently, we have seven hundred and fifteen. So you can see as you're going up that line in, uh, the second column, the numbers are slowly dwindling, right? The next view I wanna show you is our current student population, so we get rid of all of those classes that have already graduated. Our current graduating class this year, we've got fifty eight seniors who were enrolled here on bed day. That cohort started with fifty eight students in twenty fifteen sixteen, measuring it in third grade. You can again see, there's not an awful lot of variability there over time. The one piece I wanna point out to you where there has been some variability, if you look at twenty eighteen nineteen, our kindergarten class, that's the brown diagonal line there. Twenty eighteen nineteen, we had sixty three kids in kindergarten, look what happened in grade one, we dropped to fifty six students, the next year we dropped to fifty one students. What's the worldwide event that happened during that time? Covid. Right, every school went through this, um, shifting in some demographics with different groups. Certainly kids at younger ages, um, homeschooling was a very attractive option across the country, and we saw record numbers of families move to homeschooling out of public schools. Many of those students have returned across the country, back to public schools, now that the world is, I, I don't know, for lack of a better term, somewhat back to normal.
Did it say normal, was that what you were like?
I gotta qualify that, that term though, um, but that cohort started with sixty three in their kindergarten year, they're, that's our current sixth grade class, and they're down to fifty one. So, I mean, there are some reasonable explanations for why enrollment is down, however, uh, it's still not terrific news for us overall as a trend.
And it didn't look like that really held true for all the different classes though.
It didn't hold true for all the classes, I, I think parents who were scared of, you know, the youngest kids across the country were saying, you know what, kindergarten is, you know, it's not mandated. I'm gonna pull my kid out and, you know, it, it slid into the next year, and certainly homeschooling, uh, I know even for me, I, I taught high school social studies, that's the only thing that I feel qualified to teach my own kids. If I had to teach them fourth grade math, it would be a challenge, not because math is hard, but because teaching math would be a challenge, right? So our district enrollment has dropped to over thirteen percent in ten years. When you look at our, our graduating class cohort averages and our kindergarten class size averages, the comparison there, over those ten years, our graduating cohort size has been sixty three, but our entering kindergarten class has been fifty. So this is not a, a single year that's impacting this, this has been a trend for us. The high school right now, our population was two hundred and thirty two on bed day, if we project that out, if we go back to that previous slide and project out four more years, the high school population drops to two sixteen. Four years after that, the population's at one ninety one. So what, what can we do about that? Something that we've been talking about regionally across Long Island Lakes and it's happening across the state is a discussion about regionalization. And how we strengthen program for students so that parents aren't gonna make a choice, A, to homeschool, or B, if, if it's, if they're kind of on the fence about leaving New York State, as, has happened a lot over the last decade. People have left here to go to war climates, to go to places with less of a tax burden. If we can make this place continue to be attractive, we're not gonna lose families leaving here. But we're also looking at what kind of programming can we offer that's gonna attract people to the region? And so that regionalization discussion that schools are having is, how do we, around the region, work with each other to make this a place where people wanna stay? They wanna come here and they wanna raise their families here and go through our school systems for a high quality education. So those conversations are ongoing, it, it's happening at state level, it's happening at a Bosse's level, and we're having discussions internally about what can we do specifically here in Red Jacket? It's gonna be different than what happens in Palma, and it's gonna be different than what happens at Midlakes, and Bloomfield, and Victor, okay? So, those things are ongoing, um, I would expect, uh, you know, we'll be able to update you more over time with some of the specifics.
Can you just talk a little bit about those projections, is that just a linear thing based on the trend from twenty fifteen present?
Yes, it, it's, it's taking those, those current grade levels and moving everything forward without any additional kids or subtraction of kids, so.
Okay, if you say, oh, if we continue to have fifty start, fifty entering, and then we graduate whatever classes we've got over.
and then we graduate whatever classes we've got over that time period in search of that. So you don't have more than fifty coming in.
Right, I'm looking at our current population as they shift up like that. And what what you didn't see there, or what I didn't highlight there is grades uh kindergarten one, two, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, grade three, those cohort sizes right now are all under fifty, K through three, so.
Alright, thanks.
So is is there anything in that data, Brian, that suggests there's, so for example, the ninth grade class is whatever fifty-three? Is it the same fifty-three to start it? Is how much is put and take, like entering and exiting path?
But I could go, it it would take me a little bit of time to get back and and figure out the movement in and out. We we can find that. It's just not something that we typically measure. Um we're we're living a total head count when we do this. We I could go back and find that. I mean, we can pull enrollments and uh ending enrollments.
There was any data suggesting like some leave, some come in, or leave and come in?
Yeah.
I mean, in a very limited way, you could see that one of the core classes, I think it's in our current senior, they had the same number in kindergarten as they do today, but the number had fluctuated up and down. We don't know whether that's the same kids that left and came back in any cases, but you can see that some left and some, I mean, it wasn't steady, right? There's a little bit of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wondering if anything in that data?
Okay, the next piece for me is about staff demographics. Um and this is something that uh certainly I I have a lot of interest in as somebody who's also involved in APPR and observing teachers and giving them feedback on their teaching. Um one of my goals when I started here was to observe every non-tenure teacher formally with a full observation cycle with them prior to uh considering them for tenure. So I I've been involved with that um, you know, since last year. And so by the time someone comes to you with a recommendation for tenure, not only have the principals seen that person multiple times, but I will have seen them at least once in a full cycle of an evaluation. Forty-four percent of our teachers right now have been here between, and and this includes administrators, between one and five years. Almost half of our district is still that new to the district. The remaining fifty-six percent have been here longer than five years, but that's evenly split between folks that have been here six to fifteen years and sixteen years plus, alright? Um it's a good sign when we have fewer people that are just getting here recently, but we're moving in that direction. I I wanna say, I didn't prepare this number, but I wanna say we've got somewhere in like ten or eleven people this year who are up for tenure. So it's a significant chunk that were hired at that point coming in that are gonna be um considered for tenure this year. Uh you know, last year, we didn't hire as many as we did the year before, so there are kinda smaller groups that will be considered for tenure in in subsequent years. Um so more folks a couple of years from now are gonna be in that uh beyond the five-year range, okay? You like to have an experienced staff. We like to retain people. It's one of our goals that we've talked about. How do we retain uh quality staff, keep them excited about being here and and not find an attractive option to go and work somewhere else, right? And New York State does measure the the turnover rate every year, and so um I've looked at the ten-year averages, the same ten years we looked at for student population, our turnover rate for for staff with less than five years has been eighteen percent. And our turnover rate for all teachers, including those folks five years or less, has been thirteen percent. So there there is some movement of folks out of here.
You know what Mike always question, question's gonna be is how does that compare to any benchmarks?
And I I didn't wanna put all that in, I I wanna give you a taste of this, but that is information that I'm looking at, and I can provide that to you. Yeah, yeah. I'm all about comparisons too.
Yeah, I'm just just trying to kinda gauge it is all. I don't know, it's not to imply anything, you know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, go. I get it. Okay, Mr. McElroy.
Thank you. So I won't read it for you. Uh people are probably starting to stop.
No, I think I could've said.
So we we changed our goal this year. Uh I presented on it at the start of the year for ELA and math. Historically, we've used iReady. It's a great tool, still a great diagnostic piece, great data point. Not a lot of ownership from the teacher perspective on iReady, but following our letter training and all of the work we've done around assessments. The big push from building council was to use those assessments to individualize student assessments and goal setting. So we have literally had teachers set a goal in ELA and math for each student in their classroom. The big shift in why I'm showing you ELA right now is after we rolled this out to teachers, we developed these plans in the summer with our building councils. We roll them out to our teachers on opening day. The teachers got into giving the assessments and setting goals. Their big push especially in ELA was that they didn't wanna set a goal in September for a student in June. So we were trying to lessen the load on having them have to set goals multiple times. But they came back and said, we would really rather set a mid-year goal. Uh and the reason they wanna do that is they're like, they have the kids for all of two, three, four weeks. They give these assessments, they don't really know, and this is the first time that they had set goals. So they didn't wanna overshoot or necessarily undershoot students, so they came back and said to me, can we set a mid-year goal? So these are our mid-year accomplishments in ELA. So if you look at those percentages, we're pretty close. Again, with what Dr. Weller's talking about, I know our, or not our attendance, but our number of students is going down. So when you look at a percentage rate, you're talking two or three kids can make the difference between four and five percent. Uh so the teachers are very happy. So we we feel really good about where we were. So the teachers at this point, we did our benchmarking in January, they're setting goals now for June in uh right now, in February, March, we did that in our data meetings. They also feel way more confident about being able to, having a second round, being able to set goals for students. Now especially that they know it hits. We did leave math as a September set and a June add, that's why I'm not gonna show you June goals at this point and how they uh did progressing towards. So just what does that look like? And I've got a quick, you gotta remind me what I'm doing here. Nope, clicking the wrong thing. Look, look at me. Hold on. Where am I going, Dr. Weller? Dance me one if you don't mind. So over on the left, you'll see a goal-setting sheet. This is an actual goal-setting sheet. Uh it's a little hard to see, but what you'll see in column D is the actual assessment. So the teacher's able to pick the assessment, the ELA assessment, that they want to have the student measured in. What's nice about this is you've probably heard us talk about Tracy Lindsey and our EWI charts over the years, and we've shown you snapshots of those. So the teachers enter the data into those sheets, and if I'm that first student, we've blocked out names obviously. And my teacher selects the maze assessment. It automatically feeds the September score into that. So they're then able to set a goal. So that student had ten correct on the maze. The goal was set for twenty in January. They do their January assessment. Success, uh well, no, this student only got fourteen, so they went from ten to fourteen. So automatically totals over and says, did the student make their mid-year goal, yes or no? So the quick and easy way for the teachers to be able to go in and set those assessments. Not really the point of why I wanna show you this. Really what I wanna speak about is, I don't, and the teachers don't feel like this process in getting to this level of being able to look at and analyze data is possible without what we talked about originally on the left, and that was the letters training that we went through. The letters training, uh I know I keep harping on it. Uh Chris talked to us last month. We had the superintendents in here, and we talked about about the letters training. It has been a huge shift for my building in a positive way, and it's been a culture shift. And sometimes PD can go the opposite way, and people don't feel like that there's value in it. This training has changed things for our teachers in the elementary school immensely. We have a common knowledge and a common understanding. That feeds into teachers having confidence in being able to do things like this and set a goal for a student that's individualized, it's skill-focused, and are attainable goals. And they have a lot more buy-in than, again, not that iReady is a negative, but when they're setting student goals themselves, they are keeping track and have a lot more ownership in those goals for those students. So it's made our conversations in things like student review meetings, and not gonna go into student review meetings 'cause that could be a ten or fifteen-minute presentation on its own. But it's meetings that we're having every single month about students. Uh it's a way that we're documenting to help uh ISD and Karen and CSE for students that we're looking to classify. And that's all been dramatically impacted by the letters training for us in our building. And so that's really where we are. Hope to come back and see it in June with uh our final results of how the second half of the school year is going for our kids in ELA and how they went for math. Questions for me?
I just wanted to note that one of our board goals among many, we were pretty ambitious this year, actually, I'll speak to that a little later briefly, but was to make sure that we're keeping um in mind the value of of district professional development, so to have an highlight.
To be honest, like I said, there.
It pushes us to identify that as something we want to achieve.
There hasn't been a better training that I've been a part of in all of my career, and I can honestly say that for my teachers. Like teachers, whether you're, you know, Dr. Weller, you talk about teachers that have two or three years' experience and teachers that have twenty years of experience, it has created a level playing field for all of our teachers to feel like they can be able to contribute in meetings and have a common understanding. Uh actually, Kristin DeFeo, who I won't go into from Bosse's, came and sat in one of our student review meetings this morning. And one of the things that she walked out saying was like, they are, the group of teachers is really prepared. And the data that we were going over, she was very impressed with the way that meeting ran and the knowledge that the teachers had in that meeting. So it's nice to have some outside people come in and say those types of things in review meetings with you.
Great, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Derek.
So our building, our academic goal for our building council plan was to um for both math and ELA, have eighty percent of our students show growth in the STAR assessment, which is a universal screener. Uh we went to this because we were having trouble finding data that we felt were comfortable with. We had used iReady for a while, um but the thing with iReady is is that the more skills and knowledge you get, the longer it takes for you to complete the test. So is it measuring motivation? Is it measuring endurance? Those types of things. So we had some of the data that made us scratch our heads, like it doesn't seem to, you know, a student's scores at the fourth grade level when they're really one of the best students in the eighth grade, but it's about motivation and continued things like that. So we were, uh we're doing two things. We want our students to improve, but we wanna find the right assessment to give us the data that that's helpful to us. And this is a, this assessment's much easier to administer. They can get it done in about fifteen minutes. Um and it's in terms of like, you know, you don't have to um worry about the actual software program that you're using. This is a much simpler form for us to do. So we took it in October, and we took it again in February, and these are the results that we have so far. Um sixth grade has historically been a pretty strong group academically. So at this point, sixty percent of our kids showed improvement in their reading scores, and sixty-three percent showed in in our math scores, which from halfway through the year, I think is, we're off to a good start. Um going across the screen, sixty-nine percent of our kids in reading are at or above the grade level in sixth grade, and seventy-one percent for math. Um in the last column there, ten percent of our sixth graders are three grades below grade level or more. And for math, it's only two percent for sixth grade, so we're pretty happy with that result. Seventh grade, um that's a a class that historically has had some struggles, but they are showing some improvement both in reading and in math, thirty-seven percent and fifty-nine percent. Um and then at or above grade level for seventh grade is forty-six, for reading is sixty-nine for math. Um I'm surprised to see that, but happy to see that, for sixty-nine for math. And then uh for reading, thirty-nine percent are at or below uh three grade levels, and then for math is twenty-two percent. Eighth grade, uh we did a little something, a little bit different with them. For for reading, they did do the STAR assessment uh both in October and in February. Um so forty-eight percent improved. The reading scores, fifty-four percent are at or above the grade level, and twenty-nine percent are three grade levels or more below. Um but the stars there, the asterisks there. Uh we we got hit pretty hard with the flu, and twenty percent of the eighth grade didn't take the second, the second round of this. So we're curious to see what happens when we take it again in June, if we're getting the results that we would most likely see. Math is, um full math department's taking a look at STAR versus iReady. So eighth grade took iReady in January, and what we got out of that was sixty-one percent of our students are where they should be or above. So that's, we thought that was a good indication halfway through the year. Um so now our next step is that we'll uh take it again in June, and not only do we wanna measure how much our students improve, but we also wanna see how well the STAR assessment aligns with our state scores to see if that's a good fit for us or or not. And then um the next thing we looked at, we wanted to do.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um the percent improvement, is that how many kids showed some improvement, or is it how much they improved?
Uh that they showed some improvement. Yeah, it it's.
I mean, it would be, it would be ni- it'd be nice to think that every student's improving to some degree. Is that a function of the test? Or like, I I I don't know. This is a, it's kind of a deep question, so I don't know if there's an answer right here or now, but it just seems, as a layperson, it's like, are we not, is not everyone not improving some?
It's a function of kids. He, I, the the test is a snapshot.
Yeah.
It's that day.
Yeah.
A kid comes in that day, didn't sleep well the night before, had an argument with somebody in the hallway, or whatever.
They got.
It's gonna impact that particular assessment, and and vice versa. There are some kids, they come in and normally they don't test very well, and they bang it out of the park, and you go, wow, that that was fantastic. But again, it's a snapshot. It's not video recording of multiples of these. It's one day this month, one day this month. So, but that's why it's a diagnostic tool, right? So it it leads us to ask more questions, but but we're hoping every kid is gonna show improvement, but that's typically not the reality. Even in districts where you've got ninety-nine percent graduation rate, and kids are knocking out of the park under three-day exams and all that, they're still, with diagnostic assessments like that, you're still gonna see some results like this.
Yeah, I mean, every every kid that's showing up is learning something every day. It's just a matter of whether or not, how much is it, and will it show up in his test even if it's, whether it's a lot or a little.
Right. But that's, again, it's what we do it multiple times, is so we can continue to dipstick and and figure out, is there this trend toward growth?
And will you, um will this, for like sixth and seventh, I don't want the eighth graders, because it's a little different there, but will they do the same STAR assessment again in toward the end of the year?
In June, they're taking it, they're taking it again.
So that we'll have one more snapshot.
Yeah.
And this gives us some nice data. We have Allison Puyall, um is our reading interventionist, who is very familiar with this test. So we did data on every single student, and she's been working through this. Um it's it's a lot of students to work through sort of, and there's some time with that. She'll share what she learns from math with the departments, and then they, they'll do their data meetings on the vertical TVs to analyze the data further.
Where is, uh we have, like for sixth grade, sixty-nine percent are at or above grade level, ten percent through or more grade levels below.
Yeah.
Where's the rest?
It it's rolling on a, a grade level below or two below, but I just hope those two like at or above or um three or below is sort of a significant area that we wouldn't wanna target. I thought it might be interesting for you guys to see, uh like the best.
Said it different ways. Seventy-one percent, that means, right, seventy-nine percent, the other twenty-one percent is at one or two below.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, and then the next thing. Uh the next thing we wanted to focus on this year was attendance. Um all of our buildings have, use attendance letters. I mean, they're all triggered with the same number of absences. So we have three letters that we send out. The first one goes out when you have seven full-day absences, and then the second one at fifteen, and the third one at twenty. Um and then what we've done to our letter is not just say you've missed seven days of school with fifteen. We put a chart in there so you can see first period, second period, so math, English, social studies. So you can see, a parent can say, alright, you missed seven days of school, but you've missed your math class first period twelve times. What's happening there? So it gives a little bit more information than just a little bit that you find out to be helpful, so. But this um chart is showing that, so for sixth grade here, the first column, these are, um the orange represents, these are students who got the first letter. So uh. So, uh, in sixth grade, eleven students got that and then, uh, the green is the second letter that they get and blue is the third letter that they get. So, what this shows me is that the first letter seems pretty effective because as soon as they get it, they're driving, driving the numbers down. The, in sixth grade, that one, that's the same student. So, we have really one student with a chronic absentee problem in the sixth grade. Seventh grade is sixteen students received the first letter. We've got four that got the second letter. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good, I think, improvement. And then, nobody's gotten the third letter so far. Eighth grade, twenty-four got the first letter, five got the second and three got the third letter. And those three have been, since I've been here, have always been, uh, have always had chronic issues with attendance. The third letter, what that does for us, it triggers a meeting with our, um, I recall it, our MTS test here, two and three attendance teams. So, they come in, they meet with me, the counselor, social worker or, or the outside and/or the nurse. So, out of those four people, they're gonna meet with two of us, three of us or four of us. And we do some problem solving around, uh, what is causing the problem and how can we help them? For, for example, if it's mental health issues they have and they're looking for a counselor, they're having trouble getting services, which is typical. It's difficult to find those services. Our social worker can help them get connected to different community organizations to help them out with that. And that's it. That's it for me. Is there any questions?
So, earlier in the year too, so we talked about what our building council goal is. And that is try to get as many students and staff, so adults and, sorry Connor, Colin, Randy, Caleb, kids. So, I'm always referring to us kids, kids involved in, in extracurricular, interscholastic club or, um, an athletic team. So, when we look at this data, look to, so the Figurates Technical Center, New Vision, those kind of programs, we look at those. It's more of an academic program, so that data won't count towards this percentage. So, our goal is we get eighty-five percent. And the rationale, the thing behind it, it's also all research driven, and I've talked about this before, is that when you're engaged in something, some part of the school community, your attendance goes up, your behaviors improve, uh, you're more engaged within all of your classes, you start to foster more meaningful relationships with students and with staff. There's just so many different positive things that go along with being involved, just not in something academic, but something extracurricular. And I gotta say it too personally, it made a big difference in my life, especially coming, I know I'm a middle ex-grad, but coming from this community. I know that being part of extracurriculars, I saw my close friends and my family in person and myself. This was the pre-enrollment data. This came, we pulled this data back in August. What you see is, is that students at the top, staff at the bottom, that seventy-nine percent of students are taking part in extracurricular. And then, you also see that seventy-one percent of our staff members took part in extracurricular. When you take those numbers, combine them both, so what you do is you just combine one eighty-four plus thirty and divide it by two thirty-one plus forty-two and you come up with a final number of seventy-eight percent. What we're able to do is, and what's special about our, our school, is that we can go through the entire list and the building council team was able to identify, you know, what's Michaela part of, what's Randy part of, what's Colin part of, what's Connor part of. We can know, we, all of us, and Mitch can talk to that too, we were able to sit down as a group and be like, well, if he does this, she does that. They're part of this, they're part of that. Well, this person's not part of that. So, what we wanted to do then was, okay, well, how can we find out the reason why? So, why, what's the rationale, what's the reasoning why some kids, some adults are not taking part in something outside of just a classroom setting? So, what we did was that we had individual meetings. So, as a building council team, we just split it up. We split up all the students. Julie Brown, she took the lead on meeting with all the staff. And what we did was we just had personal conversations. We asked why, what can we do different? Just really getting to the, like, other root cause of. And with the power of that, what that helped was, is identify, you know what? You know, our play DS, which is like an esports team, you can be part of that or robotics or art club. What's special here too is, is that we have vast amounts and diverse amount of interscholastic clubs. From our track team to our robotics team, which did a, did a wonderful job this past weekend, to our masterminds. So, we have a lot of different options for our students here. Plus also, I know it's small, but historically, athletically, there's been a rich tradition here at Red Jacket within our sports teams. So, to continue to increase those enrollment really does help out overall with our whole school community. So, when you take those numbers and what you see was that increase, we're not there yet for eighty-five percent. We're currently at eighty-three percent, but when you break that data down even more, if we can have five more people so that students and staff involved in either interscholastic or an athletic team, then we're hitting the eighty-five percent mark. So, that five more people is a, is an important piece. Everybody counts. The thing though, the kind of pattern that I saw, the why, so like why aren't people taking part in something extra? And what you saw, the traditional pattern was for the kids, was they weren't. And they work because the reality is they work, it's not for themselves, but they're working for their family. The adults, same thing too, is that some of them are working a second job or they have these family obligations they have to go to. So, when you really break down that information, it tells you that the family unit, the family piece is, is really the reason why they can't put in those extra hours. And we completely respect that and we completely acknowledge that because that is also getting all of our students college and career right, but also we know the importance of family first. That if the teachers are taking care of their families and families are taken care of, they're always gonna be the best for their kids, for our students, that is. And the best pieces to show is that, like, what is the end result? Yes, making sure they're prepared for college, making sure they're prepared for the workforce or their, for their career. That's, that's our number one goal. But in order to do that, we gotta make sure that they can walk this stage. And when they walk this stage in June is like the most important piece. What you see here are these data points and what I had up before the students presented on was the June graduation rate. Last year's graduation rate with August graduation, we're at ninety-five percent now. So, what that tells you, there's three students who didn't graduate. The reality is out of those three students, one just currently graduated as a January grad, so there's only two students. And I gotta say, out of the two students when I first came here, I never had the option to really meet them, work with them, even get to know them. So, I feel like things could have been different if I was with that group of students right from the beginning. Same thing the year prior. So, I thought, we had the bottom kids the year before in twenty-two, twenty-three. They were students, like, that was my first year. I wasn't even aware of some students that were previously dropped. But that's where going through our attendance process and now, we're really good at identifying every single student and the why and what can we do to help support them and their families. Plus also knowing like in the past, why was a student dropped and what can we do, where they're at, are they getting their GED, are they in the workforce? So, it's getting to know the why and the details, knowing the whole child is a really important piece for us. So, that's the reason why I can show that data.
Just to clarify what Brian's saying, like, he didn't get a chance to know some of those students. In high school, the cohort measurement starts at grade nine. So, any student who starts ninth grade at, at the beginning of September, they are counted in that cohort because they're enrolled in this school. Okay? If they're, they're enrolled here for at least ten days and they, they attend for a day, they're our data. If they leave us and say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pull our kid out, we're gonna enroll them in Spencer Board. And they never enroll in Spencer Board, it's still our data. If they move out of state, um, and, and don't tell us, and we're trying to track them now, and that happens sometimes, it's still our data. So, that there, there are some circumstances where best intentions, we're trying to track kids down, we're trying to make sure that we're closing that loop. We can't find them.
I can imagine if you had a much larger district, that becomes a much larger.
So, coming from, coming from a larger district, I got to live through it, got to work through it. That's why I come here, we're able to take some of those systems and processes and really make them our own. And I'll talk about what Brian said in twenty-two, twenty-three, that was two students. And those were two students that were out of state. We, I didn't ever get to meet them, I just know who they are. And they were out of state students, that's, they're still part of our system and part of Red Jacket. Because they never, they never registered in another district.
Do you have any projections for this year's senior class?
I was thinking this year, I think it's a good question. I, we usually get that, right? I mean, now that Tom, clearly, you would share that if you had it, but at some point he'll give us that update.
The reality is, I can tell you, every single one of our students, I mean, probably, the students that come to us on a regular basis that are here daily, we're gonna need them. And we're not gonna be the one ninety percent, so I don't have, haven't quantified that yet, but that is something that I can quickly do and I could share with everybody.
Yeah, at some point, maybe you guys can, uh, we would love to get an update on the expectations for graduation for this year. Just like we have in past years, when you guys can, when you're in position to pull that together.
Any other questions for me?
I'm sorry, I'm gone. I had a question earlier, but I, I'll have to. I don't remember what it was. I'd have to see the slide, so. Thanks, thanks, thank you. All right, oh, sorry. I guess I'm supposed to move this medium on, right? Budget update, very good.
Okay, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, budget update number three. I know, we know that we are in a specific session where a lot of the data is gonna be talked about with the board. And, uh, when we get into April, we will talk more about those specific situations as well. But for tonight, continue on the budget calendar. Scott and I had a conversation earlier as we see when we get there, that the board petitions will be available starting tomorrow because they have an earlier date now than in the past, but tax cap has been submitted. Twenty-five, twenty-six budget in terms of, seems like we just were here a couple of weeks ago, but in those past weeks, there have been a lot of variables that we found out that, I don't usually get scared often, I'm not scared, but they make you think. As I always joke with Mr. McCrady, he'll throw a number at me, I'll be like, ah, that's just a drop in the bucket. But some of these numbers are, uh, they're interesting to say the least. And then, state and federal, I know in the past we talked about, this is probably the first time where on both levels, we're getting, hit is not the right word, we are getting angst from both sides and we'll talk a little bit about that as well as the other propositions that will appear on the budget this year. So, March twenty-first, as I said, tomorrow, uh, the Board of Education ballots will be available. Uh, we have two candidates, or two open seats, which we'll talk about when we get there. Also, before the next meeting, April fourth, fourth, we'll publish our first legal notice, which is written and ready to go. April tenth is our next meeting. We'll present and we'll also adopt the budget that night. And then, the next day, we'll submit the property tax report card. April twenty-first, by five o'clock is when those Board of Education candidates, uh, petitions will be back, due back to myself. Budget must be complete by April thirtieth, get into May with our budget hearing. And then, on my birthday, we will hopefully have a successful birthday, or a successful vote and get a lot of people out to vote on the budget. Tax cap, uh, we talked about in the past, been submitted, or in the past presentation, I mean. Our tax levy limit for next year could go up four point oh-two percent, which would be, we would have the ability to increase it by a little bit over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six, some of the variables that are having a big impact on the budget. Health insurance for the third year in a row has gone up more than ten percent. This year, we know it's gonna be fourteen point three percent, which is an additional almost three hundred thousand dollars to the budget. Utilities, gas on the heating side. That first number thirty percent isn't for next year. That is what we got two weeks ago that is in, in effect on March first. So, our gas bills went up by, our state contract went up thirty percent, which on a gas, about eighty thousand, is an additional twenty-four thousand. Elect, and next year, scheduled to go up another ten percent. Part of that is, the main reason for that is obviously on the national side, trying to get more back to the fossil fuel side. And New York State is not offering as many incentives if it's not green fuel. So, as we get into a little bit of that, we're getting, both sides are battling it out and until we have a solution, uh, the prices are going up pretty hot. Electric on the same token, that March first, it went up twenty-five percent. That is close to a two hundred thousand dollar budget, so that was about a fifty thousand dollar increase for this year. But it wasn't for the full year, going up another ten percent. Insurance, atop was health insurance. That is our school district insurance, which buses, buildings, everything we have insured other than student activity insurance is different. We are, um, looking at a ten to fifteen percent increase for next year, which is just a small variable because all of a sudden, until yesterday, our deductible was going up from five thousand dollars per incident to fifty thousand dollars per incident. Through negotiations and through lobbying, throughout New York State, they were able to get down that deductible for twenty-five thousand dollars. That means on your time, a bus backs into a, in a small mailbox. It could be a small event. I was just talking about small events, not in general. That would, the deductible would be twenty-five thousand, so it wouldn't run through insurance. Our water main break in the elementary school last year was only about, oh, I say only, but it was about thirty-eight thousand. That means we pay our twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, insurance would have only covered that for thirteen thousand. So, that deductible going up, although we're happy it's not fifty thousand, that was something nobody saw coming. Dr. Weller talked a little bit about declining enrollment. And, uh, we, as a cabinet, as well as the leadership team, have been looking at staffing and throughout the entire district to figure out what is the best plan, what do we need? Where's maybe some leeway with some retirements, with some individuals leaving the district for other positions? Always having a plan to think about where we are best suited to move onto that. As well as, uh, Chris, myself and Tom have been talking about consolidated bus runs. We, fair to say, we're close to, we don't have students on the bus for very long. Think our longest, twenty-five minutes, we have some that are half hour, not, not including students staff at a Rochester, obviously you'll never make that shorter. But looking at, are there ways to maybe extend the bus runs a little bit? I know Superintendent Bernard, you talked about yesterday, do we buy a bus and they are just a little bit bigger, higher capacity? So, we are looking into those as well, just all the ways. Obviously, throughout Waverly and Lakes, everybody talks about a driver shortage, which there is a driver shortage for a lot of school districts. So, if everybody's waiting for the same position, what are some other ways that maybe we could not just survive, but succeed in this environment? So, those are just some of the things that we're considering to help with those. As we get into the high cost of budgeting items, that may be where we can maybe get back a little bit of those funds. Uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, salaries are, uh, just under nine point six a million. We took, we anticipate for next year, an increase of one hundred and sixty-three thousand. Equipment, uh, relatively flat. We talked about earlier, uh, two presentations ago, I think, our, our maintenance truck is at the end of its useful life. As now we find out we have a lot more at the end of its useful life. So, that is, uh, one of the larger equipment needs we're looking to, something for maintenance. I don't know if it'd be a truck, but maybe it can help out with fields and, uh, maybe even help out with mowing if it's the right, uh, piece of equipment. Supplies and contracts, most of those increases are what we talked about, gas, electric. Gas for the buses has gone up, just not at that large level we talked about before, as well as the need for different types of contracts. Uh, benefits, also then is driven by health insurance. Debt service is going down a little bit for a grand total of, we are right now looking at. Uh, benefits, most of that is driven by health insurance, debt service is going down a little bit for a grand total of, we are right now looking at a, a budget of just over twenty-three and a half million dollars, which would be a three point one percent increase, and which, in the region, the average budget is going up about seven point six percent at this time. That won't be what goes out to the voters, but seeing large, um, increases across the area. Uh, we still have the revenue to support our budget, uh, looking to use about a hundred thousand dollars in debt service, which is interest and arbitrage we made from previous capital projects, um, as well as using a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of reserves to lessen the burden on the tax levy, which the tax levy current right now to balance the budget would be eighteen point three million, which is a one point eight-nine percent tax increase at this time.
Tim, can you talk about the reserves, what specifically?
There are some, uh, there are some reserves that are writ, are written to be able to fund, to balance the budget, uh, workers' comp, uh, both employee reserves, which is the upper reserve and the employee reserve, uh, workers' comp is another one that by its law, legal laws is able to be used as a revenue to support the budget. Uh, we take the money out of those reserves, and then at the end of the year, we put some of it back into the reserves, depending on where we are.
We would do that because we think they're healthy.
We do, we think that, we think they're healthy, as well as showing a little bit, I mean, there are school districts that have to use a half a million dol, there are, especially this year, there are some school districts that might have to use three quarters of a million dollars to avoid, um, we have the school district of Wayne River Lakes, last year, they had to cut one point two million dollars, a lot of that in staffings, so.
And, and by doing that, we're mitigating the need to, we're, we're saying, let's use that as a measure to avoid, kind of, on paper, it looks like we might have to go for a, a higher tax levy increase, or, yeah. And whereas, when all the dust settles, we may not necessarily have to do that, so by using those reserve funds, we can kind of buffer ourselves and say, let's hope we don't, we didn't really have to raise it three percent, three point one percent.
Yep, it would, yeah, it would be about three point four, six percent.
Now, but year after year, if that were to happen, right, eventually that wouldn't be sustainable, so.
Correct, yep. And, uh, yes, it would not be sustainable, and we would have to get into, as Dr. Weller presented, our turn, our turnover rate on staff is at a very respectable level. We don't want that to be caused by us having to affect that turnover rate, of course. And then, uh, even with that one point, eight-nine, I can't remember if it was ninety or eight-nine, one point eight-nine tax increase, uh, down at twenty-five, twenty-six, this is even without, I remember last year, two years ago, um, Farmington was the municipality that did its reassessment. Last year, all the other four municipalities did their reassessments, and now Farmington is reassessing again this year. So that twenty-five, twenty-six, um, tax rate is without Farmington's reassessment, because we haven't received what the, uh, number will be for how much the tax levy will, or the tax, the total tax base will increase because of that reassessment, so even with that one point nine, or eight-nine percent tax levy increase at this time, it would still be lower than, uh, two years ago. And last year, at this time, we thought that our tax rate would be about twenty point three, with, even with taking in all the reassessments, so it was, uh, much lower than we just gave last year, so we anticipate eighteen point one-three at this time, but it will be lower than that eighteen point one-three, but that is the, for lack of a better word, the worst case scenario for our tax rate at this time. Which is, we talked about, last year is thirty-four percent lower than it was in fourteen, fifteen. State and federal funding, uh, first to start with the state, relatively good news, uh, Foundation Aid, we talked about the governor's proposal, um, last month, which we are very surprising, um, happy with. Uh, she proposed that a one point four-six billion dollar increase, which meant a minimum of every district in New York State would get a two percent increase. Ours was a little bit over four percent. Uh, this, the other houses have come back with their proposals, uh, they are looking at a little bit of, the Senate is asking for a little bit further of an increase. We're not sure if that three percent will just bring up the floor, or if they'll bring all the other districts that were higher than that two percent floor up a little higher. But we are hopeful, and even the Assembly's, uh, proposal was a two point nine percent minimum floor. April first is the deadline for the state, we've already been told, I might have said it the last presentation, we will not have an on-time budget, but it'll be pretty close. Uh, can't remember, April seventh or April eighth is when the, uh, state legislators adjourn for the holiday, for the Easter holiday. So, um, anticipate that the budget will be right around that April seventh, April eighth date, which will allow us to make, uh, decisions close to when we approve the budget, but it'll give us time to be able to put up a budget that takes our state aid into account. Uh, school meals on the state side are, um, right now, the governor proposed free for all, no matter what your free and reduced is. Uh, both other, uh, houses also wanted free for everyone in the state, not to spoil like we did with the student presentations, but the federal government put a sledgehammer to that, which we'll get to when we get there, so we're hoping that free for all in the state, but right now, it may not be the case. Uh, we talked about smart devices for students, bell-to-bell prohibit in all schools. Uh, both, uh, houses did their legislation saying that the Senate, there'll be a local, uh, district will be able to have, come up with a local policy, as well as Assembly is rejecting, and it'll be back to the district to decide, with a little bit of funding for, uh, whatever those little packets are called, that the phones go in. Uh, buses, electric buses, that means, we talked about how the governor had radio silence, Assembly also radio silence. Uh, the senators, Senate did propose that they're asking for independent firm to study battery range, as well as electric planning to, they all know it's not feasible, so leave somebody else to look into it being not feasible. I think, I don't remember if I mentioned that Naples has, uh, two electric buses, and during the winter season, it took twenty percent of their batteries to even, before they could even leave the bus garage in the cold area, air, so. As more data is getting big, getting back to the, the state, hopefully they'll take that into account. BOC CTE, um, that is any, uh, BOC service that we use, our example would be our librarian here, our OTPTs. Uh, only the first thirty thousand dollars of their salary is debatable. And, uh, the governor proposed, it says none, but proposed not increasing that, both the Senate and the Assembly proposed increasing that to sixty thousand before that twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, uh, school year, which would mean a lot more BOC's A coming back to a lot of districts in the area. The retiree earning limit, right now, there is no limit on retirees under sixty-five to come back, how much they could make, that has only been about the last two or three years. Uh, the governor's proposal was that that earning cap would go back, anyway, the retired could only make thirty-five K, the Assembly also agreed with that, and the Senate did propose that extend to twenty-twenty-seven, but while also bringing that to the extending, but just increasing the cap from thirty-five K to sixty-five K. So, those are a lot of the priorities that are going around, that they're debating back and forth at the state level right now.
Is that for all public employees, state employee, or state?
That is for, um, that's for civil service, it usually comes into play for the TRS, for the teachers or the administrators. It is also for, on the civil service side, but they have a rule where for the first year, they can't make, they can't make any money, so it only applies to, applies to them after that first year of retirement.
Do, and does that, I don't know, uh, conversation for another day, okay?
On the federal side, uh, a lot of things being, a lot of things being thrown up, a lot of things being thrown up, a lot of things being thrown up in general, like trying to, uh, the recommendation is avoid the noise on both levels, and just try to figure out where we will land. As we've had a discussion in cabinet, we have to kind of prepare for what may come on the farthest end, or not the farthest end, but on the tentative end, to be able, because we don't want to be caught with our hand in the cookie jar, even though I love cookies, but. So, Title One, we have been a lot of funding, this will be on the federal level, and then the next slide will talk about red jacket, as what it means to us. So Title One funding, uh, for this year, eighteen point four billion. Uh, right now, the House is proposing about four point seven billion dollar cut in that, the Senate is, uh, proposing a little bit of an increase. IDA, which is all your, our special education grants, uh, Title One is for low income, mostly based towards reading and literacy. Uh, IDA, our special ed grants are kind of laying flat, because there's kind of federal legislation still that says you can't, a free and, free and appropriate education is still in law, so can't really, uh, affect that money as much. Title Two, which, I misspoke, Title One is just low income, Title Two is more on the reading, uh, side, reading and, uh, professional development, two point one-nine billion. The House proposed cutting all of that, and the Senate proposed, right now, is to keep that even. Title Four, which is, uh, English learners, in our case, uh, one point three-nine billion, which is flat in both those proposals, kind of the same as IDA. What that would mean, what that would mean for red jacket if it were to happen? Title One, we would lose about thirty-one thousand dollars in federal funding, which in our current grants would mean a third of our reading teachers, our leadership teachers would go from grant to have to be supported by the general fund. IDA is actually a little bit of an increase, so that would just mean two-hundredths of a special ed teacher would go into a grant, more than is currently in the grants. Title Two, um, if we lost all that money, that is about a third of our professional development right now, is paid for through Title One, Two Fun, Two A funding. Title Four, as I said in the previous slide, staying flat, just wanted to say that that's where we fund our English as a second language services. The big one, which I kind of talked about, uh, before we got to the state, is National School Lunch, currently funded at fifteen, seventeen point eight billion. Uh, propose to cut that to fifteen point eight at a minimum, which in our case, uh, we receive about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in federal revenue, which is about just under sixty-two percent of our cafeteria revenue. If that were to cut to three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two, we would not be able to offer free meals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That is not just us, we have schools in the region who have offered free meals since thirty years, twenty years from now, who have also said, if their funding levels are obviously much higher, that they would not be able to offer it any longer as well, which then we get into the conversation three or four years ago, the general fund then picks up, we had close to a hundred thousand dollars in unpaid lunch debts, so. We hope, we're not even worried about the debt side, we're just hoping that free and reduced lunches can continue, because it has been wonderful opportunity for our students. Pro, the other two propositions that will be on the ballot, we've been talking about the bus replacement, uh, two large sixty-five passenger buses, one meal, one mini wheelchair bus. Uh, we receive ninety percent of that back in Transportation Aid, it's existing fund, no budget or tax impact for this year and for next year. If electric buses do become a thing, then we're unsure of, uh, the impact it would have on both of those two things. Proposition Three, Board, Board of Education vote, two expiring seats, uh, Ms. Gardner and Mr. Bacon, Ben Aiken, uh, five-year terms, run from July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty thirty, those petitions are now available, and can be picked up at any time, in the business office. Any questions? Covered a lot of ground there. Even though the Bu, April tenth is only about three weeks away, we hope to have a lot more ans, well, we will have a lot more answers to be able to approve our budget proposition then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
You guys good to go, any questions?
Yep.
Thanks.
The, please, Scott.
Nice job, well, um, a jam-packed, um, start to the meeting here, so thanks, everyone. Um, and we're gonna go ahead and move on to some of our other business, we'll move pretty quickly here. Uh, we've got personnel, uh, we'll go ahead, is there, which we do by consent, any questions or concerns before we get started? All right. Um, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, in pursuit of education law approvals, the consent agenda items as presented. Motion Chelsea, and I don't know, what holds up? You guys, you ready to go to?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I accidentally pulled out the board of calls, I'll get back up there after we do this.
Oh, cool, yeah, yes, we'll be quick about it, because we've got a lot, okay, so we had a motion, Chelsea and a second from Scott, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none, motion carried, very good, and I just wanna say thanks to our, um, our district leadership for, uh, getting those coaches' positions filled, I think, earlier than ever before, so that's excellent. And, uh, we had our transportation director move to a permanent status in his role, so congratulations, and thanks for all you've done the last couple of years, awesome. Um, with that, we'll keep moving forward here, CSE and CPSE. Uh, Board of Education, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, in pursuit of education law approves, the CSE and CPSE recommendations as presented. Motion Chelsea, and a second, all right, did you guys have any questions? Hands off the hook, good to go, thank you, um, all in favor? Aye, and opposed, none, motion carried, great, thank you. Um, claims audit, okay, so if I move to reports and correspondence, we've got our claims audit report, any questions on that audit log that you got? Any stated stuff, something was off by a one dollar, it's like we got it figured out. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for his report.
Uh, thanks, well, I'm gonna cheat a little bit tonight, and I have, uh, Mr. Alex here with us tonight, and we're gonna give a quick update, I've shared with the board, um, my opportunity last year to go on a learning tour with EF to Japan and Korea, and when I was there, I bumped into Mitch, and, uh, we were in Japan, and, um, then from there, it sparked, I knew the interest was gonna be there for him to try to bring this to our district, and he's in the process of that, so I'll let Mitch give you a quick update of what we have done and where we are up to this point right now, so, Mitch, can you use a quick update?
Yes, absolutely, so I'll hand out, just a little handout about, uh, the Costa Rica trip, just, you might answer some questions, or anything you might wanna know a little bit more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, there you go. I also just wanna say, the last time that I was at a board meeting was when I was granted tenure, so I was really humbled to be up here today, and to be able to share this opportunity with you all. Um, yeah, so, when I was in class in Japan, it really was exciting for me as a teacher, I've always wanted the opportunity to be able to bring students abroad, to learn more about Spanish, you know, just in an environment they wouldn't be able to here in the United States. And as someone who studied abroad twice, I studied abroad in Spain when I was an undergraduate student, and then in graduate school in France and, uh, Great Britain. It's just something that's made education really impactful for me. And so, Chris brought this back to us as a staff, gave us the opportunity to meet with some of the staff at EF Tours, and talk about the different programs that they had, and so I was really quick to jump on this opportunity, just because I think it's something that's so unique, um, for our school, having a really small school, um, you know, the students get really close with their teachers, and I think this is also great for the comfort level of parents too, to know that if their student is going abroad, that they're with people that their kids have had, I know my kids, by the time they get to junior or senior, I've had Randy since sixth grade. So you really get to know. So you really get to know these students and kind of build, build that trust and what an awesome way to be able to kind of continue that, that want to, to learn more about a language and to be able to learn some things, you know, some cross-curricular things as well. So this tour that I worked with the EF Tour Department is to Costa Rica. Costa Rica is a really unique kind of blend of big city, but also really cool environmental things. Very safe country, also a little bit more affordable for our students because it's not across the Atlantic Ocean. So just kind of at a glance, some of the things that this trip would include would be having a full-time tour director, someone who speaks the target language that would be traveling with us from place to place. It includes all the different entrances, some really cool things would be a coffee tour, visiting some national parks, kayaking, local exchanges, ways for the students to engage in the language. And it also covers all the details, like having a motor coach that takes you from town to town, the airlines, the students all going together. And so I brought this back to my Spanish two threes and fours, had informational meetings, they got to learn more about the trip and just kind of answer those questions, see what hesitations existed with the parents, what interest was there. And we had twenty students that signed up for the waitlist for the trip, so there's definitely a lot of interest there, which is awesome. With that number, that would require us having three teacher chaperones, which is great too. And on my end, it builds that confidence having other members of our staff, just to make us more well-rounded. If you open up into the center, you can see lots of movement on this trip, which I think is great for this age group, being able to experience a variety of different things. So going to the capital, San Jose, will give them a lot of experience to practice in the target language and then visiting different parts, seeing things that I haven't even seen before and I like to travel all the time. So I think for kids, this would be a really exciting opportunity to not only improve their language, but improve their confidence and the ability to get to know other people. With the number of students, we would likely be combining with another school when traveling from place to place, which I think is great, that's a real life skill they need to learn, getting used to people that might come from a different, different state or different background and having the comfortability to make those connections. So I just wanted to share that with you, something I'm super passionate about, I know Chris is as well, so I'm also kind of on the same team and same wavelength with that, but just hoping to have any questions that you might have about the program.
And so our goal will be the summer of twenty twenty-six?
Yes, yep, July of twenty twenty-six, which wouldn't interfere with any, you know, school or classes they'd be taking. And would also give a chance for those seniors to kind of have that end of celebration. But right now, it's aimed at the freshmen, sophomore and juniors, just because the amount of time it takes to prepare for this trip, getting a passport and.
It's a nine-day trip, right?
Nine-day trip, yep.
Any questions from the board? This is awesome. I just want to say thanks because, you know, were it not for someone that has the passion to take the time to invest in figuring this out, you know, it's, it's, it's an opportunity that not even offered.
Yes, absolutely, and it's, it's something I'd like to, to see continue here. I know we, we saw that some local school districts have done it and have seen some success with it, so I think it really helps build that confidence too, that this is a strong program that the other schools can come back to as well.
Yeah, and I've, I've heard through separate channels that the EF Tours is pretty well-known.
I think too, I was speaking with a staff member that way back in the day, that Red Jacket used to do trips for their country program to Paris. So there is some, you know, some kind of built-in excitement with some of the parents of these students because they may have had the opportunity to do it before.
And to Mitch's point about the opportunity to do this continuous, continually, we connected with another local school district, Perry, who's just on the other side of Monroe County, very similar sized school district to us. I got connected with their superintendent when I presented on this topic at Niskus in March. And Tim is connected with their business officials, just to talk about a lot of the different, and they now, I think they've taken like over a dozen trips and they have, this, right now, just regardless size, for their trip that they've set for the same summer, they have forty-five kids that are attending the tenure. So they've doubled, they've doubled their numbers and like, and I think he said they started the year before COVID, he joked and said it was the worst year to start, so they started in about twenty nineteen. So in, in the last six years, they've doubled the number of students who are attending and having this opportunity. So we're excited and I want to thank Mitch for being passionate about it and jumping right in and hopefully we'll be talking and moving students in this direction in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roughly said, word is on race.
And normally, we've been here all day for our practice. Thank you.
I will leave in case anyone else has any other, other interests. You're welcome.
Okay, well, did you have any thoughts?
Nope.
All right, with that, we've got some committee updates. How do we, so we've got pretty much updates from every committee, but how do we want to?
So Scott, let's, let's start with Brandon. So Scott and Joseph, you have a quick update on Brandon. Jen can give an update on code of conduct, you guys can give an update on policy, and I can give an update on CAT project because Matt and Barb aren't here. Oh, true, I can help that. I can, it's okay. So you guys want to start with Brandon, can you just give a quick update?
Um, we met, we met, we met March sixth.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll go there.
We did get to review some really early draft, drafts of some carnivals and got to give some feedback on what we liked, what we'd like to see. Oh, yep, and we also reviewed banners for, um, yeah.
Which were they approved?
For that.
Yeah, some graphics.
Yep.
New business.
Fair, okay, very good.
Yeah, and those were the banners, as folks know, the thing that we talked about with Brandon, we talked about with the adjustment that we were asked to make to our mascot, is that we've been diligent about the fact that we're not gonna take something down until we have something to put up. So the Brandon committee has approved and we're hoping to have those like in, end of the school year? But that would, okay, so about the summer. So the new banners to come down for like the sectional league titles and also, and also we're putting a big banner in the back of the student cave, that's gonna be a new image that's gonna capture Red Jacket. Then we're also putting up new visitor sign and home spot sign to show where people should sit in those locations. So just trying to revamp that gym, the, the varsity gym with taking down those banners but putting up new ones.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, and then.
So I can record conduct, so Jen and Amy sit on code of conduct with me, they both have been a part of it intermittently and will be continuing moving forward. We met on March twenty-seventh, right now, we're in the first stages of our review. The code of conduct review came out of conversations last year around consistency application and making sure that what is in that conduct, that code are things that we are actually utilizing and that we're doing that with consistency. So that team started looking at, and we're gonna go through sections of the code each meeting, and they started looking at the first couple of sections. And what they're doing is they're similar to like what we do in our policy committee, they're looking at what we have, they're comparing into what the policy from area one is suggesting, but then we're also looking at comparables from a couple of other local districts that were selected. Penan, Palmaq, Geneva was brought to the table, Victor was brought to the table and then more recently, somebody brought an example from Greece. Just looking at the different codes and asking ourselves, how does ours compare versus how do we want this to adjust? The goal to that committee still is to have a draft to the board by July for the reorg because we need to have that board approved for August to be distributed to parents and to, to students for opening day. Thank you. Do we have CAT project? Yeah, so CAT project.
You're, you're the committee representative for the night.
Yeah, that's what my list was.
Jeez, we're gonna have to really pick up the slack next month.
So CAT project, we met, we've got a couple of user group meetings this week, so Jeff, Tim and I will lead that charge for the district. And the user group meetings, for those who don't know, they're made up of people that were on the CAT project committee who are specific to the area that we're talking about. So for example, one of the compositions was our walkthrough of our library space because part of the CAT project is looking at our library space to see if we can make that more, can we find a spacing that can be common use for our community and for the school district? So some type of large conference room or large reconstruction or whatever you want to call it. So we met with the librarians, with our, our, our folks from SEI, the folks from Watchdog, which so for those who don't know, those are our, our project manager and our architects. So we meet with them that, that same afternoon. Mrs. Brown, our athletic director, joined us, we walked through our current athletic facility and fitness center, because that's on there, to talk about how we can create that as a more effective space, more user-friendly, safer space, find pathways through there that isn't gonna be interrupted and also can we build that in a way that it's gonna be accessible by our community to be able to utilize. And then the last one we had yesterday was about our internal and external safety, which is one, and, and some classroom adjustments, but really around those internal doors and looking at, can we create separation and tag systems like we currently have in this space in areas throughout the district? Also looking at making some additional doors in the elementary because when you go to that main four-way stop in the elementary, there are, there are not doors there that can close. And then looking at a lot of our exterior doors, like the front office and the high school and trying to make that a, a safer space, looking at shifting where Bosse's is located and having their office go to a different location so that they can have an isolated entrance. Tim, Jeff, am I missing anything? Talking about air conditioning and system, and HVAC needs. So those meetings have been happening for the last two weeks, so the user groups meetings will continue for the rest of the spring and hopefully Barb and Matt will be able to update if they'll jump into those meetings. But Matt and Barb were supposed to be at the one yesterday, but were unable to attend.
You want a new policy and I'll back you up?
Sure, so we got through seven policies tonight, two of which are good to go for next board meeting that we'll hold on. And then the other five, we need clarification on different pieces, so once we get that, we'll be able to give those back. Chris, you're gonna send out everything to everybody, right?
Yep, I'm gonna, we'll be updating, I'll send everything.
Okay, and if we have the answers, we'll, we'll come, that'll go with it, right?
Yep.
Are you gonna include what we're waiting on if we don't have it?
Yep, I'm just gonna do a little sign up, like that we, what I've read to her and what we've all talked about, but I'll just capture for everybody.
Okay, and Chelsea on them, since you're like, we're sending this, you know, it wasn't on. At the bottom, it showed you the last time it was updated, so if you want to cross-reference what we currently have, you can pull it up on the website and then you can just see the difference, which we're like, or the ones that we've been added, yeah, or tweaked.
And then we have a couple of policies that we didn't approve last time, that we got our answers on and we're gonna go ahead and move tonight from the board meeting. We're gonna, getting into a good groove and not for nothing, the policy committee and Brandon, Brandon committee represented and voted.
Well, here, yes.
I almost had a momentary, questioning myself, but you two are awesome. Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm gonna spend like two minutes or less on board goals. One of my goals was to review this as a team in our work sessions and also be able to share. So I'm just gonna do it from here, I did make a little summary document for today, so again, got a lot going on in this meeting today, so I'm gonna, my eyesight might not be good enough depending on if we can. I guess I can, well.
It's in, it's attached to the work document.
Wait, oh, no, no, oh, sorry, I just sent you an email this afternoon with the, all right, the document that I had.
I might have.
Oh, hold on. Oh, did you add that today?
Yeah.
You're good, sorry, Tim, okay, wow, you, you added that at the last minute, sorry. Now I'm just gonna let's go on. Yes, thank you, okay. Well, I don't know if any of you can see this, but if not, I'll quickly walk through it. So I've got three categories, achievements, upcoming and planned, and then some opportunities, things we really haven't got to yet, but that we'd like to. So I, I, I just, especially after today's presentation, I want to call out our student board member program. I feel like this, this, the way we engage has matured, we're starting to figure out, like, you guys have get into a groove of maybe how to, what kind of topics you like, you want to cover and how to make your presentations, so I'm really grateful for that, really excited about that, how that goal for the board has developed and thank you. Our increasingly, our use of committees to, to maximize board effectiveness, we've got our four committees, we've just talked about them. Policy review plan is one of our goals to document and implement, we're well on our way there, so thanks again to this team and to our, and Superintendent Bernard and also our Bosse's folks who are, I don't know how anyone ever did it before we engaged with Bosse's. Jen, I think you've probably been through that in the past and it's not an easy process, but it's going pretty smooth by my observation, so at least at this point. It's been a goal of ours to review district achievement data, understand the district needs. So we have in-depth review of some of the similar data, actually a little deeper dive even from Dr. Weller back in October and then really excited that we were able to present some data from each of the buildings and from the district today, so thank you to everyone who presented. And then Board of Education work sessions and PD opportunities, we have. Oh, I must have left that on there, okay. I actually moved that into upcoming, so we have, there's a four-county SBA spring conference, that's actually tomorrow. I was hoping to go, but I'm not gonna make it, I don't know if anyone here has, I haven't heard of anyone. It's tough, it's an all-day thing for most of those of us that work, which is all of us, well, except Barb, but she's sober and so. And then, but I hope you all, and I know there's a little bit of interest, there's Bosse's FLTCC, Figueroa's Technical Career Center visit on the fourth, if there's any way that you guys can make it for a couple hours, I highly recommend it. They, the students in the culinary programs serve lunch, they have some presentations, they, they have student tours to all the programs. Really, I did it, was it last year I guess? Really cool, plan to go again. So if you can at all swing it, it is a few hours out of your weekday, so understand whether you can or can't, but that'd be great. Things we've got, so that's upcoming. Also, obviously our work in the budget process is tied into our goals as well. And one of the things that I, that I really appreciate Superintendent Bernard is that I will continue to do and the entire staff is to communicate the why behind our budget actions. Whether it's, whether the why is external factors, but we're obviously adapting, or whether the why is internal decisions for what things we want to support, whether it's letters or facilities adjustments or what have you, right, programming changes, extracurriculars, but helping the community to understand why are we spending more money, why are we cutting money in certain areas? To me, that's something that I feel really strongly about. Not to say, here's the numbers and the percentages and here's your tax levy change, but here are the things we're doing with that money, or start doing, stop doing, or continue doing. And then things that are, you know, candidly are opportunities for us that we really haven't worked on, so we gotta talk about this as a group, is we wanted to commit to some more direct communication from the board to the school community. Most of that goes through our administration, but I think we saw an opportunity to, you know, maybe it's the board doing something in the newsletters or whatever that forum is, so I, I know I want to keep working on that. And then community relations, we had a goal of doing a better job of engaging with local community government organizations, so I want to make sure that we as a board talk about that in our next work session, and we want to do that. Any questions or you guys want to add anything? Feel like a reasonable summary? Okay, cool, well, thanks again for the way the board really attacked some, some great things that I've been doing this year.
I, I will say, I like the aggressiveness of what we've done, right?
Yeah.
It's okay to fall short, and I like the aggressiveness.
Yeah, yeah, and we're actually doing quite, I mean, I, I'd like to maybe share at some point kind of a, a percentage of how many things we set out to do and how many have we really checked, checked off and, I mean, we're well over fifty percent. We may be closer to seventy-five percent of the things we said we wanted to do, the actions we wanted to take and have we done them? So I'm really proud of the work this, this group has done. I thank you guys all for your help with that, it's been huge. That's it, I'm gonna move on from the goals unless there's any questions, anything to add? Cool, all right. We're gonna rip pretty quickly through some of this regular business, you know, not to discourage any conversation of course, but I think we can move fast, so. Financial reports, you've got a treasurer's report in your packet, any questions on that? I will go ahead and accept that on behalf of the board then. Capital outlay seeker, with regard to some spend down, I think, some smaller projects from the prior capital project work?
It's the hundred thousand dollar project that we approve in the budget every year.
Okay, got it, that, okay, thank you, Tim.
Yep.
All right, so Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools and pursuant to education law approves the seeker resolution as stated in the attachment, you all have the attachment. Can I get a motion for that? Motion Scott, and a second from Jen, any questions? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Transportation bond resolution that has to do with resolution to purchase buses that will be on the ballot. The Board of Education. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the bond resolution as stated in the attachment. Motion, Scott, and a second from Chelsea. Any questions on that? Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Fixed asset salvage. You have a list of items that will be salvaged. I'll go ahead quickly with our resolution. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the fixed asset salvage list for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented. Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Jen. I actually have one que, I think it's probably, you'll set me straight pretty quickly, Tim, but we're salvaging five buses combined with three? Does that, does that have to do with just the cycle or whatever?
Well, one of them is a cowl that we have three towels that we no longer-
Those five plus a towel, is it?
Yeah, we just said we're up to a part where we lease one to Bosse's to use for trading and we have more spares than we feel we need.
Okay, okay.
Per recommendation, we're going to salvage that name.
Okay, cool. Just wondering what the thinking was. I didn't know. Any other questions then? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to new business. We got six items here. We'll kind of move quickly here. So World Language Club. Thank you to Mr. Lelk for his presentation. This establishes the club that would facilitate the international trip, hopefully. So Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the establishment of the World Language Club. Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Jen. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, very good. And the school calendar, we, do we acknowledge this? Do we vote on this? Or is it just an acknowledgement?
I think we do approve, I just didn't remember.
Okay, okay. Let's see, do I have to memorize all of them? Okay, so. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, in pursuant to education law, approves the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school calendar as presented. Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Jen. Any questions? Any comments about the school calendar?
No, the nice part is that it is aligned across the Wayne Finger Lakes with Wayne Finger Lakes schools, but also for the first time that I can remember, it's really very closely aligned with Monroe County, which helps our staff because obviously we have a lot of mix of where people that work in our district and their students and their children attend. So, and that was a really, that was a focal point of the Wayne Finger Lakes Calendar Committee, which is a couple of superintendents who work within the region. But now have tried to collaborate better with Monroe County to line up some of those big breaks and some of those times so that there's some consistency for a lot of us who share staff.
Excellent. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, motion passes. Four County School Board ballot, this is kind of cool. This is for those who may, if you, hopefully you read through it.
What's Heather Bachman? Heather Bachman's the nominee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Yep, I see. Okay. So we're gonna do two things. We're gonna nominate Heather Bachman for, to serve on the Wayne County Finger Lakes Board of Education. So that's because she resides in our district. And so that's just the process for nominating individuals for the Bosse's board. And then, that's a separate thing than the ballot that I was going on. Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, so the first one we'll do here is the nomination Heather Bachman to serve on the Finger Lakes, Wayne Finger Lakes Bosse's Board of Education. So Board of Education, that's us. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent and pursuant to education law, approves the nomination of resident Heather Bachman to serve on the Wayne Finger Lakes Bosse's Board of Education for the term of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Motion from Jen, and a second. Saw it. Any questions? Any questions on that? It's good, it's cool. Former Red Jacket Board Member? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Great. Separately, we've got a, and we've got an election ballot for Four County School Board. And if you hopefully have a chance to take a look at that, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we basically have one nomination for each position, right? So that means there's a whole lot of debate we have to do. Anyone see that differently? Because I see one person for president, one for vice president. They're choosing a credit union, there's only one option, and an executive director. And they're saying who's can sign things for the bank accounts, who's on the bank account. So I'm gonna go ahead and go out alone here and say we're probably just gonna vote to, for yes on all items unless there's any reason not to. All right, very good. So, Tim, how do we memorialize that? Can you basically, we're gonna vote on the ballot as we just discussed here, right?
Right, you're-
So it's gonna be a yes.
You're approving me filling out the ballot based on just what we discussed.
So the decision from the board is to vote yes on all, ask, all four provisions.
Yep.
Okay, very good. All right. So Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the district clerk submitting the Four County School Board's ballot as recommended, as we just recommended by the Board of Education. So a motion from Scott, and a second from Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Very good. Thank you for that. We have two policies. Gender-neutral, single occupancy bathrooms and drug-free workplace. You all had multiple chances to read through. We had a little bit of discussion within the policy committee and then back with the board, I think, in the last meeting. So at this point, we're gonna go ahead and vote to, well, we're gonna vote on those policies. So Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law, approves the waiving, are we really waiving the second reading? Okay. Approves the waiving of the second reading and approves policy five, six, three, four, and six, one, five, one as presented. Motion from Jen, and a second from Scott. Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. I guess I didn't ask for questions. Sorry about that, but hopefully you would have said something. Stop me if you need to. All right, trying to keep this one in here. Okay, okay. And so then item F on our new business is an acknowledgement of some of our designs for the, with respect to banners and murals tied to our mascot change and the branding committee. So for anyone who is here may have, those images are posted on board docs. Will there be any sharing specifically, or just when they go up and we'll probably-
We can, we can talk to Chris about sharing after, after tonight.
I mean, they look pretty cool, so I just, I don't know what the right way to do it is. It, I mean, don't do it tonight.
No, no, no.
Okay, cool. All right, so I guess that's it, you guys. Is there any thoughts, questions on that? Otherwise, we're just saying, hey, great job and we're excited to see the imagery. By the way, thanks to the Brandon committee for all the work on that. Cool. All right. And with that, thank you to those of you who joined us and thank you to our student members. We are gonna move to an executive session. I can't tell you exactly how long that'll be. I imagine most of you will not want to stick around. But other than that, I'll go ahead and, so we have to vote. So Board of Education, hereby enters executive session in accordance with committee's log. At eight oh one PM, discuss the employment of personnel. Can I get a motion for that? Jen, and a second from Chelsea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, the board is now in executive session. Thank you very much for those who joined us.